Thank you. Welcome to the February 27th work session. Thanks for being here. We do have, we would like to make a little change to the agenda. I know we have Kristi Bassett and Jessica Slono here and they're out of class and you know how important it is for them to be in class. So, the superintendent has asked if we could hear from them first. Would that be okay with the members of the board?
Yes.
Are you ready for us now?
Yes.
We're excited. We got pumped up.
Just for everyone to know, Jessica and Kristi are both our Florida Teachers of the Year, and they actually have come back to Polk County after serving their time with DOE. But they've come back to the district and they're offering their expertise. And today what you're going to hear is how we are actually utilizing their expertise from their classrooms to other classrooms, and they're going to talk more about it.
We're very excited to be here today, and we deeply appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about something that's very dear to our heart, which is teacher leadership. We're going to share with you a program that we've developed and we wrote a grant for over the summer, and we've been so pleased, the district buy-in that we've received, and also the support we've received from the Polk Education Foundation. So, thank you so much for having us, and we're excited to share with you.
So, we wanted to start off with kind of something that caught our attention when we were exposed to it. This research comes from TNTP, the New Teacher Project, which is a national organization, and they published it in this publication called The Mirage, which we've actually already ordered for all of you, and we will send you the hard copy. But it's really shocking if you look at the numbers. They dove into professional development and what actually makes an impact on teachers, and they found that on average districts were spending about $18,000 per teacher when you're combining substitutes, when you're combining curriculum, and a bunch of other factors, yet they were not able to prove that it substantially moves teachers. Also, we saw that teachers needed clear information about their strengths and weaknesses, and oftentimes the professional development that teachers are given, regardless of how it's given to them, is oftentimes very broad and not necessarily individualized, and harnessing their strengths and weaknesses. And after, they did all this research, the big thing that they pulled out is that only 40% of teachers actually found that that professional development was a good use of their time. So what in all they were finding was that districts were putting tons of effort, tons of resources into supporting teachers, because of course they valued their teachers and they want to see them grow. However, that amount of effort wasn't equating to growth.
So, the research that we have studied on professional development, combined with our shared experience of being the two Florida Teachers of the Year, led us to the question, how can we enhance professional development for teacher leaders in Polk County, and how can we take those amazing experiences that we had as Florida Teacher of the Year and bring them back to Polk County's so deserving teachers? We also, as we traveled to stay and have worked in our district, have talked with teachers who have a desire to take a leadership role, but maybe they don't want to leave the classroom ever, or maybe they don't want to leave the classroom yet. They possibly could be interested in a coaching or administrative role one day, or maybe they have no desire to do that. But they do have a desire to lead others. So that led us to the question, how do we facilitate that leadership, and how do we support those teachers and guide them? How do we maybe not lose an amazing teacher to administrative or a coaching role if they would prefer to stay in the classroom? Last year Jessica created an amazing program called Extending Excellence, and it was actually a requirement that someone who applied for the grant we received this summer had participated in the Extending Excellence program and received that grant. So, so excited that Jessica did that for us, so we can apply for this grant. So this is kind of phase two of that program, but I do think it's important that we share a little bit of background about the program that Jessica completed last year, where she took high-impact teachers from Polk County schools, and then she took teachers who were early in their career, not necessarily first-year teachers, but teachers in their first, second, or their second, third, or fourth year of instruction, and paired them up with a high-impact teaching mentor. She supported those mentee teachers by exposing them to growth mindset and allowing them the flexibility to make mistakes and to grow under the guidance of the mentor teachers, and these mentor teachers had also received training from Jessica on growth mindset, received some training with coaching language. And I think one of my favorite things about the program, second favorite is definitely how much the mentee teachers grew, but I think the biggest impact is that the high-impact teachers said how much they grew and how they felt appreciated and acknowledged by getting to participate in this program and guide these early-career teachers. So that led us to the question, how do we continue the work of the Extending Excellence program? We also knew that whatever we did, we wanted our teachers, the pool of applicants, to be results-oriented, focused on solving problems that they see in their classroom, or in their school, or in their district, and ready to be just, make a positive impact on their teaching community. So, we're happy to share that we received a little over 60 applications. We selected 29 amazing teachers to participate. We know 29 is an odd number, but it was very important to us that they meet the criteria, and we had budgeted for 30 participants, but 29 really seemed to be what would be the best fit for this first cadre of teachers. And we are ecstatic to say that two of our participants were finalists for Polk County Teacher of the Year, and one of our participants ended up winning, and that's Michelle Dimwoodie from Lincolnson High School, and Alyssa Lee from Laurel Avenue Academy. So, that leads us to the question of how do we take these teachers who are receiving these awards and doing amazing things, and making sure that we harness that power and that energy and that dedication and that skill, and amplifying it across our district? And we believe that this program could help us to answer those questions.
Exactly. So we set out four program objectives that we wanted our teachers to be able to do upon completing it. So we have collaboration. We want to instill in them this relationship between each other, this freedom to be able to collaborate across our very big district without feeling like they're living in a silo within their classrooms. We also wanted to put a spotlight on instructional excellence, learning how to develop their instructional practice of themselves and their peers. So we really drilled down the fine-tuned parts of what makes a teacher a high-impact or a highly effective teacher, and how you can communicate that to your peers. We're also results-focused. We really wanted to not ignore the fact that data is very important, and that we wanted to use that data to show, this is the type of teacher that you have shown through progressing your students, but then also how can you, A, make yourself better for the sake of your students, and then also help teachers embrace that data as well. So we needed individuals that were going to be growth-minded, that were able to take a painful reflective look sometimes at themselves and their practice and say, okay, this area right here, this is what I can do better at, and I can surround myself with colleagues who will support me. And then we also wanted them to engage in continuous leadership. We don't necessarily want to define it for them, that, okay, when you go back to your school, you're going to have to take on this project and do this, this, and this. We wanted to really be this organic conversation among colleagues that helps them decide, where am I needed within my school, maybe even within my district, and how can I continue to support my students, but also the rest of my district and the students beyond my classroom?
So if you've spent any time talking to Jessica or myself, you know how important literature is to us and research-based professional development. So that is the foundation of our learning through this program. Each teaching participant was able to choose whether they wanted to focus on peer mentoring or creating an effective professional learning community. So I am leading Cultures Built to Last, which is focusing on professional learning communities. I find that one of the most valuable parts of my teaching experience is that collaborative planning time. But that collaborative planning time has to be used effectively, and everyone who's participating in that collaboration needs to come there with the intention to not only helping their students grow with the planning, but also learning from their peers.
Let's go. Would you like to talk about Practice Perfect? And then I'm leading the group on Practice Perfect. It actually ended up splitting half and half, which was wonderful. So this is more for teachers that are wanting to take a more collaborative approach, maybe peer-to-peer in a coaching-type role of leadership. This really helped to instill this mindset of practice, because teaching is one of those professions that we are in a performance role, but we don't get time to practice, and our time that we consider practice, we call professional development, and it's not necessarily practice. So it talks about how doctors and lawyers and different, even sports players, all have a chance to practice their craft and focus on the drill-down moments of kicking the soccer ball, or calling a colleague in the middle of writing a memo and talk about it. But in teaching, sometimes it does feel like we're all alone. So it's developing the system of collaborative practice, but also making sure that we know that practice doesn't make perfect, it makes permanent. So we need to practice perfectly.
And I'm sure you've heard how many times we've said collaboration. It's also a big element in this program. So while we have separated into these two book studies, every participant received each book, and that we had budgeted for that in our grant, and requested enough funds to receive, for every participant to receive each book. And we are very intentional about making sure that when you are studying this book, you also receive a time to collaborate with the other group, so that you are still learning from the other literature and the other professional development that's going on the polar end of our teacher leadership group.
All right. So this is our timeline. I'll let you guys.
Okay. So we began in January. In your packet you have the original grant that we applied for, and it had our original timeline in it, which looks completely different from this. I'm sure that you're used to reformatting timelines. But, so we began in December actually taking applicants, and in January our applicants were informed whether they had made it into our teacher leadership group, and we had our first face-to-face meeting. This February, we had our first Twitter chat meeting. We wanted to help to accommodate for the geographical size of our district and also the various schedules that our teachers have to deal with when they want to participate in professional development, but maybe they live 20, 30, 45 minutes to an hour away from Jim Miles, or they have some family obligations. So we both love participating in Twitter chats to discuss literature and to discuss best practices. So that's something we wanted to tap into. We have a really great Twitter body in Polk County teachers, but we also have a lot of Polk County teachers who aren't aware that there's amazing conversation going on on Twitter. So we've been excited to kind of harness some of the Twitter talent we have in Polk County, and then to also introduce this platform to some teachers who had to make up a Twitter handle. And in March, we'll have our next face-to-face meeting. April, we'll have another Twitter chat, and we plan to wrap up in May, where our participants will graduate, and hopefully they will become Class One of our teacher leadership program. We have modeled these programs to be like Leadership Polk. We've both participated in Leadership Florida and Florida's Teacher Lead Network, and we hope that it will be something ongoing.
We also wanted to make sure that we're not collaborating for collaboration's sake. We recently read something called, that was called "collaboration." So we want to collaborate, but we also want to have outcomes. So listed in your packets and on here are some of the outcomes we're talking about. We need to improve teacher retention, not only in our new teachers, which we do have a couple of teachers that are within their first five years of teaching, but we also want to improve teacher retention for our more experienced teachers by valuing their expertise, their experience, and also helping them feel challenged at what they do. We want to keep high-impact teachers in the classroom. We see the results that those teachers have on moving students, especially our most needed students, those students that are living in poverty. So we need them in the classroom. And then we also wanted to continue authentic learning opportunities. Kristi mentioned Twitter chats, and that really is a 21st century way of engaging in professional learning that's customized to your own needs. When I go on Twitter, I look for specific things that will help me with what I'm interested in at my grade level and my content area. We want to raise the academic growth of students throughout the district through teacher collaboration, and we know that that will happen when we bring these high-impact, highly-focused teachers together and allow them to share their strategies. And then we also want to enhance our teacher leadership skills, and we're doing this by following a set of national teacher leadership standards. We actually had our teacher leaders rate themselves, and that's on the pie chart that's there in your packets as well. And you can see that many of them actually mark themselves much lower than they, than maybe their peers may have thought of for them. So that shows that they really do have this mindset of growth when they're looking at what truly defines a teacher leader.
And they're honestly evaluating themselves to determine, where do I need to grow, not only to help myself, but to truly help as a teacher leader, that's to help with the teacher next door, the teacher down the hall, the teacher in the building over, possibly a teacher that teaches on the other side of our district, and make an impact in classrooms that are beyond our own.
So we wanted to show you what our participating teachers are actually saying. These are clips from our Twitter chat, and this is just our second time coming together, and they're reflecting on some of the knowledge that they want.
So, our 2018 Polk County Teacher of the Year tweeted, "Never mistake activity for achievement." She said, "Guilty as charged, Polk Teachers Lead." And I think that that's resonated with us, because that's something that we continue to monitor for in our class. And what the show means and what Practice Perfect means is that when you walk into a classroom, just because everyone looks like they're on task doesn't necessarily mean that they're engaged. And that takes a shift in mindset and a shift in understanding the learning that's happening. I also think that we see that in adults with professional development. We can't mistake compliance, participating in professional development, or engagement and growth through that professional development. So hopefully our participants would say they're engaged, not just compliant.
Robin Everett, she has a quote on here, saying that she loves saying, the love to saying, "Practice makes permanent," making sure that you're practicing correctly the most important things, and she attributes it to PLC and in the classroom.
So Jennifer Hobson says, "Replace purpose with an objective," so a goal. I tend to focus on the overall big picture. I need to recognize the small measurable outcomes. And sometimes when you have this marathon of a school year that you're running, it's difficult to refocus and make sure that you're meeting certain benchmarks. And what Practice Perfect is doing is saying, you know, slow down and focus on these small measurable outcomes, and that's going to help you get over the finish line with all your students.
So Thea Troxler is saying that she, "I find that every time I change myself in a positive way, it impacts my students in a reciprocal way. When we're on the same page, learning can improve." I think it's so important we don't necessarily forget the teachers that don't need a lot of our help and support, because their growing is also going to impact their own students.
It's about collaboration. That's our favorite word again. I think it's so important that we be connected as teachers, the capital T with an S stands for teachers, and Twitter speak. We can learn so much from others, and having a common vision supports the learning and growth for all students. Randy Miller is Twitter famous, and her school does quite a bit with Twitter. And if you're interested in any of these, you can just type in hashtag Polk Teachers Lead, and you will find all of our Twitter conversation.
So we really wanted to share this information with you, not only share what it is that we're doing, but we wanted to kind of have your ear, so that we can take a look at the future and how we can impact even more teachers. So we've been playing around with some ideas for sustaining a program like this beyond the one year that we get the grant. The grant was a $7,000 grant, so it wasn't a large amount of money, but it did cost $7,000. So here's some ideas. One being, what if we partnered with local colleges, Southeastern, Florida Southern, Polk State, and what if we helped to enhance their teacher prep programs by setting up role-play classrooms, where we have our high-impact teachers come in and help practice these different skills that teachers need, especially our incoming teachers, like classroom management, their questioning techniques, how they handle when a student is expressing some disruptive behavior. All of those can be different activities that they can engage in a role-play scenario with these teachers. Then once they've done that, and these teachers are moving into Polk County schools to complete their internship, these colleges will then have a pool of applicants that are truly high-impact, highly-effective teachers, so that they know that these teachers are going to be mentored by the best. Finally, then, say they come through their internship and they're ready to enter, of course, our Polk County schools, we now have a pipeline of teachers who already come in with a mindset of feedback and growth, and understanding what it looks like to take your practice very seriously and be very reflective for the sake of our students. So in being in conjunction with these schools, we're thinking maybe part of incentivizing teachers to participate in this program, besides the stipend that we worked in, would maybe be offering them those college classes, or even making it transferable to their kids. I know as a teacher, sometimes when I consider moving into administration or doing other things, I thought about the pay, honestly, and I kept thinking, how many, I'm going to put my kids in college. So it would be really, really great if I had that opportunity to not only get myself some college classes, but if I was able to kind of bake those for Rainey and Oliver, so that they could have them as well.
And what we would potentially request from the district, if we were in a position to make a request from the district, would be that the district meet the cost of the program. We are doing this program for less than $300 per teacher, and that cost goes to the research-based literature and the stipends for completing the program. We think it's very important to recognize the commitment, even though it's a very small stipend, to recognize the time commitment that these teachers have made to participate in the program, and acknowledge their completion of the program.
Finally, we wanted to close with this quote, which is also from The Mirage, which is very powerful, that we believe districts should take a radical step towards upending their approach to helping teachers improve. From redefining what helping teachers really means, to taking stock of current development efforts, to rethinking broader systems for ensuring great teaching for all students. As you read through the report, it is quite interesting, in that there is lots of different ways to help teachers out there, but we really need to rethink which one is best for our district, because we're still on the search for what makes the most impact.
We have so much excellence around our district. How can we tap into the amazing skill and the practice that our teachers are doing each and every day, and amplify that and extend that into a network, a lattice that stretches across this amazing county that Justin and I are so proud to call home. So we would love to take any questions or any insights that you have.
So currently you're operating on a grant?
Yes.
And when does that expire?
At the end of this.
So it's just a one-year grant?
Yes.
You're asking, what you're asking the district to do is pick up the cost of that moving forward?
Right.
And it runs about seven grand a year?
Seven grand a year. And the Extending Excellence program that started this was run on $8,000, but it was on assisting teachers, so that was about $500 per teacher. If, in an ideal world, we would love to take teachers from this program, take a top chunk of those teachers who have now gone through a more in-depth process of training and coaching and collaborating, and then use them to be our peer mentors, both high school, middle school, elementary level. That program costs a little bit more, because you're paying for substitutes, so that the teachers could go and observe each other, where this one does not require that.
Right now, it's almost the opposite. We had teachers who participated in Extending Excellence, who are now in our teacher leadership class. We would almost like for that, ideally, to be flipped, to where you participate in this leadership class, and then the next year, two or three, you're really meeting that, scratching that leadership itch by being a mentor to teachers from around the district.
I just want to thank you. When we do our strategic plan, we always talk about retention of teachers. This is just one excellent way to do that. So thank you, and I hope the district will be able to find resources to continue it.
We hope so. We're hoping to meet the needs of teachers who are earlier in their career. We like to think we're early in our career, and then teachers who have put in two, or three, or maybe even four decades, and we love the wide range of years of experience we have participating in our program. It's wonderful to see people collaborate who may have never had the opportunity to meet each other, because they teach at different schools or on opposite ends of the district.
Mr. Townsend, then Ms. Fields.
I beg Ms. Fields to be serious. Couple of things. First is, have you had contact with any of the local colleges? Have you guys talked to Polk State about their program?
I have briefly talked, and I think we both have a very good relationship with Florida Southern, and I have a new friendship with the new president of Polk State, and as a graduate of Polk, and graduate, so of Florida Southern, and Jessica's a graduate of Southeastern. We would like to deepen those relationships, but nothing formal.
Okay. Now, I mean, I'm very, very supportive of that. Any connection you guys can build with the local college, I think is incredibly important, and we do have to recognize a hurdle to that, which is another problem with our friends at the state. There's a bias toward universities for teacher production, and haven't been doing a very good job of it. And anything you guys can do to think in terms of higher level as well, because you do carry a lot of weight when you talk to people, I think building from the local level up is what we're going to have to do. So, thank you very much for that. And just one general question, and maybe just something to think about, but it strikes me. I noticed on your goals, the outcome goals, there was a thing I wrote down. The growth we talk about is always academic. I think maybe the events of last week or so have also highlighted the degree with personal growth, human growth, is incredibly important, and I think forgotten quite often. I mean, I think academic growth is generally a subset of human growth. I'm curious if you have any thoughts about that, if you've talked about that in the class at all. That's probably much too long an answer to begin here, but just a thing to be thinking about.
No, absolutely. I know. The huge focus of mine is yours, family engagement, and I'm noticing that you can't really truly make this incredible gains of academic gains unless you do have that relationship and the support with your families. Talking about necessarily Parkland, we haven't done that just because of the age of our students, but it definitely is a topic of conversation. We recently, well, yesterday, we did an UN conference at our school, where we got into groups of topics we wanted to talk about, and there was a very big group of people trying to talk about teaching social skills, and how we need to make time in our day to talk about growth mindset, to talk about socio-emotional learning, and to embed that throughout our lessons and not necessarily focus.
Can I say one last thing? I'm sorry.
Oh.
This is the...
I have my answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't want it to run away from me.
Well, I would say this program is definitely rooted in academic outcomes, because, you know, while we come to school every day to meet other needs, we have to always make sure that that academic need is there. But I think in many ways, this program is meeting a teacher's socio-emotional need by, you know, not feeling as isolated, or not feeling that, you know, I say often whenever I'm speaking to new teachers, that, you know, humans aren't made to teach in the same room, the same thing for 30 years. You know, stretch yourself. You may try a new grade level, a new subject area, a new school, but teaching can feel, you can feel very isolated. And we're hoping that this could be one way where we kind of help teachers not feel so isolated and feel like they can grow, and hopefully, while the conversation may start with academic growth, you, you know, Jessica would be quick to say, you know, if you're struggling with academic growth of a student, what kind of relationship do you have with that student? What kind of relationship does that student have with their peers? And I think any teacher that, once you start to have that conversation, you know, it is not, it's not one-dimensional. It's multifaceted, and it would organically go into other areas.
Just to interrupt this, I think one of the great problems with the Florida model is that there's so little room for failure. There's so little room to, the consequences are immediate. There's, if you, if you don't get something right, if you don't develop immediately, you're punished for it. And that's something that has to change if we're going to keep anybody. And that's something that has to change if we're going to keep anybody a profession. I think if you guys are going to succeed, we have to have a model change that allows for constructive failure to some degree, and I think that's not really on your plate to fix, but it's on mine.
Well, I don't visit my classroom. There's failure every day from, mostly from this. I like to say I'm a first-year teacher because I'm first-year teaching English Language Arts.
Ms. Fields.
Hey, I remember by the year ago, at the Teacher of the Year event, you all talked about wanting to do something to contribute beyond what you already were doing, so I want to thank you both for coming up with this vision and with this idea. One of the things that I read last night is that your information says there is not a program in our district where teachers should develop their teacher leadership skills.
And...
And so, my question to Ms. Jackie is, can this program not be under the umbrella of professional development? Can the funds that they need not come from the professional development department?
And the reason I wanted them to come forward today, and we had a conversation, so that you understood, so when we start bringing this and branching this out, and we can do that, that everyone understands why we're putting it or replacing it because of the work that they're doing.
Well, I think it ties into what we are trying to accomplish in professional development, especially for new teachers, is just critical.
And our participants are receiving professional development credit, and we have worked with the PD department to tie this in, and this is under, we don't... NetConnect. But when we went into NetConnect to establish the course, it was a little, it took us a few minutes as a team to figure out what umbrella it would fall under, under NetConnect, because there wasn't something existing with this type of description, and we had kind of wondered if there had been anything that already existed that maybe we didn't know about, because we don't know about all the teacher leadership opportunities in the district as much as we would like to. So, we kind of felt like that may have possibly answered our question for us. If there's no drop-down for teacher leadership, that made us kind of think, well, I'm not sure that there is a course available. And, but this is something that is new for a lot of people, and I think we had a lot of coaches when they saw the email emailed, and we're like, is this open to coaches? No. We're so, we're sorry, this is just for classroom teachers, and so many replied, oh, I wish that this would have been available to me. And we said, but you're making a great impact in a coaching position now, but how do we maybe support those teachers before they make that decision? And we don't want it to sound like being a coach isn't wonderful or being, going into administration isn't wonderful. We think that that's great, but we want to make sure we support teachers who aren't ready to do that or aren't ready to do that yet.
Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to say thank you to both of you. You're both former Teachers of the Year, which means that you don't have to do any of this anymore. I spend a lot of time writing and executing grants, and it's not something that you can do in a couple hours after the kids go to bed, so I know you're giving up time with your families, and we greatly appreciate that you've come back and are continuing to support our district, so.
Well, thank you very much. We believe that to whom much is given, much is expected, and we expect a lot out of ourselves. It's an expectation we put on ourselves, and we think that the district and the state has helped us grow so much and really helped us turn into teacher leaders, and so we want to make sure that we're giving those opportunities back to teachers who deserve it just as much, if not more, than we do or did.
Mr. Harris.
Two observations. One, I think back to the 19 years that I spent as a classroom teacher and the many in-service days that I experienced, and the sound of my colleagues in my ear has never been far away because rarely did I hear extremely exuberant, happy comments about the experience. This gives me hope for the future, that there will be more people who will have a positive experience and walk away with nuggets of knowledge, as I call them. Second observation, the... This opportunity is something that many people need, but maybe will not or do not reach out for it. It's an opportunity for change, and many of us could embrace change more than we do. It makes you stretch your comfort zone. And I know, looking back at my career in the classroom, if I changed doing something about every three to four years, it was a lift, and I look back with a realization that that gave me a renewed enthusiasm. Whether it was changing subject, changing classroom, changing position, but something changed every three or four years kind of kept you on your toes. Even though you might have been more comfortable and spent less time staying where you were, it helps in any occupation to stave off getting in a, setting your ways and not being open to growth. I appreciate what you ladies are doing and certainly hope that it catches fire.
We hope so. We received, like I said, quite a few applications, but some of them said, when we asked, you know, what made you apply? My principal told me, too. The Human Resources Department was wonderful, helping reach out to principals, and sometimes it does take that little, that little nudge to be pushed out of your comfort zone, and so also hoping that teachers here that we spoke to you today will help bring some validity to the program.
Mr. Wilson.
Well, I think a big part of leadership is vision and the courage to move forward with that vision, and I just want to thank both of you for having that vision and moving us forward. Yeah, I'm appreciative to our superintendent for, you know, identifying the talent we have in our district and leaning on that talent a little bit. You know, it sounds to me like the board is very much in favor of this. As one board member, I would hope we could find the money to keep moving us forward.
Thank you. Let us know how we can help.
And this is just to show some of the things that we have going great. We have a lot of great things going.
Absolutely.
You know, we have Florida Teachers of the Year that they took their work for a year when they won on the road across the entire state, and now we have them back here where they can implement and help out very own teachers and help and make that connection. And it's easier for a teacher to hear it from a teacher, and the truth from a teacher, and they do an excellent job. It's safe, non-threatening, but it's something that it makes somebody go, oh, I should think about it that way. And not just, well, I say kudos to both of them, but when I saw both of them, I said, you're not getting away from Polk. You have to come back.
I'm pretty sure it's the only place I can teach. Almost positive.
So, I applaud the work that you're continuing to do, and they keep up with me and I keep up with them, so we'll keep making sure that they keep supporting our teachers throughout the district. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
If it's okay with the board members, we have Maria Longa here. Would it be okay if we just continued with the discussion items? Anybody have a problem with that?
Okay.
Maria and Dr. Aix come forth. This one is about the Schools of Hope that was received by the district. I know you heard about it, but I think you haven't heard the details of the Schools of Hope, and I wanted to make sure as we start kicking this off within the next month, that you hear the details and you understand everything that's going into that school. Very exciting news. The school is very excited, and we're very excited, so I'm not going to take any more time from Maria and Dr. Aix.
If you don't mind, I'd like to pass out a handout to help guide the conversation so you know something to follow. So, this is great news, and it's a little bit the story of if at first you don't succeed, try, try again, because we did apply as part of this project for Schools of Hope, and we didn't get any of them. We were so disappointed, but then we tried again. They opened it up again, and we tried for four, and we got one. We got Kathleen Senior. And so, Schools of Hope is also probably one of the only good things I can say about Houseville 7069.
Right, right. We didn't think we could do that.
And it's $4,434,000 that we have received for Kathleen Senior, and it is something that was authorized as part of the legislation of Houseville 7069. And the schools that were eligible that we could apply for were schools that were in their first year of turnaround process. And so, we had eight schools in the first year of turnaround. If it was a school in the second year of turnaround, then they were not eligible for these funds. And it was a sizable, it was a very generous allocation. It was $2,000 per student at the school. So, the school that we got the award for, Kathleen Senior, was our largest allocation, possible allocation. So, it was, it started off as $4,104,000, and for whatever reason, the state of Florida decided to give us an additional amount at the very end there, and so it ended up being $4,434,000. Didn't ever get an explanation for it, but we took it. So, that's how it started, and just to give you the big scope, there were 11 awards that were done during that first round. So, it was highly competitive. There were several hundred schools that were eligible in the state of Florida. They were supposed to award, they allocated a little over $50 million in the state for these awards, but they did not consider more than 11 as worthy to get an award during that first round. At the second round, an additional nine. So, they awarded 20 awards, and they were supposed to award 25. They only did 20. During the second round, there were 33 districts. Not all the districts that applied during the first round chose to apply again. It was a little frustrating, lots of requirements for this project, but 33 did apply during the second round, and we were one of them. So, you have here in the handout sort of the overview, the purpose for the project, and, you know, following on the previous presentation and the importance of building relationships and looking at socio-emotional learning and not just the academics, this project is nicely a recognition of the fact that you have to look at the whole child and you have to consider the importance of wraparound services so that the school improves and the students improve and the faculty of the school improves because of those wraparound services and not just the academics. And so, you see laid out there five different columns, and those were all required areas that we needed to address. We structured our application on the research from the University of Chicago on the five essentials, and so that's what you see there are the five essentials for turning around a school. And the first one is effective leadership. And so, a very large part of our application was building the capacity of the leadership, building the capacity of the faculty to become their own leader. So, everyone's a leader at the school. We're all working together to further the success of the school. And key to that was the idea to develop a master's cohort for Kathleen Senior, and it's a tremendous opportunity. I was there yesterday afternoon. It was PD day for them, so LSI was already there for the PD, and we invited faculty from the University of South Florida to come and answer questions that the teachers may have about this new initiative. And I was just so thrilled to walk in and have the media center just so packed full of folks there wanting to know more about it and interested in furthering their studies and becoming better teachers. So, really exciting to see that. As part of the grant, it would cover tuition reimbursement for anyone that participates in the cohort, travel expenses. We want to partner with the University of South Florida because they are developing a lot of customized programs at the time, so they're willing to customize things for us, which is wonderful. Already, for example, they, you know, considered, well, we can't start in May because the teachers are still going to be teaching, so, you know, they're open to starting our cohort and doing a summer term starting a little bit later in June. So, really nice how everyone is working together to customize this to make it successful for the teachers and the school. And then, building the capacity of the leadership through LSI professional development. And that LSI PD is really already underway because thanks to the availability of UNICEF School Improvement Dollars, we have already started that. We weren't sure that we were going to be getting these funds, right? So, because we did get them kind of late even for the second round, and so we already had some good ideas about what to do and how to help schools, so we started that already with the UNICEF dollars. But this provides an opportunity to do so much more for the school. Professional capacity is its own category and required as part of the application, and so, like you see there, we have a lot of different elements for PD, including paying for subs, including paying for teachers to attend the PD, the travel expenses, any supplies, and what will be lovely as a recognition and a reward for the staff at Kathleen Senior is a recruitment retention bonus. We're still working out the details of how we're going to structure those rewards, but we've been, you know, we had to, we had to put something in the application, obviously, but we are underway in making those revisions and working with our PEA and other groups to make sure, and DOE, to make sure that as we modify it, everyone is on board and supporting everybody's needs. But really lovely to have an opportunity to recognize and appreciate our teachers and all of the staff at Kathleen Senior in a monetary way. Ambitious instruction and learning was the other area that was required, and rightly so. And so, again, PD for the teachers, building their capacity in those different areas. LSI is not just doing PD, I want to clarify. They're actually providing personnel to be right there onsite at the school. So, it's not your typical PD where we're pulling people out, and they're learning something, and then they go back, and maybe, maybe not they implemented. They're actually there in the building, in the classrooms, working hand in hand with the teachers and the staff, so they're pushing in. There'll be a dedicated literacy coach that LSI is providing, a dedicated mathematics coach, and, what was the good one? Kind of like our student success coach. So, three staff right there onsite, working hand in hand with the staff and the faculty. So, I just want to clarify that because I know when we hear PD, we think of pulling people out and not actually pushing in. Field trips is the other generous component that we have in there for Kathleen, so helping the students be able to go and do college tours, see colleges, actually envision themselves on a campus and having college something that is real for them. But college is not for everyone, so it can be visiting, you know, something related to an academy so that they can see and envision themselves actually being successful in different careers. But also, the typical field trip experiences like museums and science centers would be not only good for extending their learning beyond the classroom walls, but also as a motivation to do well, to behave, to, because they can be quite an enticing prize to be able to attend to these field trips. And instructional supplies, instructional technology, though we did not put very much technology in there that required a lot of explanation and justification, but we did include technology for the staff that we will be adding as part of this project. And so, in supportive environment, you'll see quite a number of different positions that we included. A student success coach, an additional student success coach, an additional social worker, an additional career guidance counselor, an additional psychologist. And all of those positions, that was one of the biggest differences between our round one application and our round two application. When we looked at the schools that were awarded, at Dr. Aix's first impression, he was like, wow, one of the big differences is the awards had staff in it. We did not put a lot of staff because this is not sustainable, right? So, we did not want to add staff for just a short period of time, but in seeing that, it seemed to be like if you didn't have staff, you didn't get the award, then we added staff. And, well, we got it. So, we did add those four additional positions, and we added the technology for them to be able to have, to do their job and be a little bit more mobile with their job, like laptops and things like that. The Drumbeat Program is... The Drumbeat Program is, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's a neat, second experiential therapy, social emotional learning program that allows students, not just students that have behavior issues, but all students to have a safe space in which to work out some of the emotions and frustrations that they may be feeling. So we did include staff development for staff to be trained in delivering and implementing the Drumbeat Program and money for a lot of drums. So they're going to have lots of drums. So if you feel like drumming, go out to Kathleen Senior. And then the continuation of some character lessons that the school already had in their school improvement plan. And family and community engagement was the last required area. So definitely continuing the Title I federal recognition that in order for schools to turn around and in order for students to be successful, it requires a partnership between the home and the school and the community and the school. And so this was a required component. The first bullet you see there, the community assessment team, that is required for all of our turnaround schools. So we included it as part of this because we're doing it anyway. And it is the vehicle that we have for engaging the community in our turnaround schools. The student success coaches are key in creating that partnership, creating a parent resource room for parents to have a space that they can go to and, you know, whether they want to be able to have a place to meet with teachers for conferences, to be able to look up their student, their child's progress on their grades or how many credits they have, how on track are they for graduation, have a space that they can be at. And parent and family workshops in collaboration with ESOL. But in talking with Beth Cummings about the Drumbeat Program, she had a great idea that she's working with the school on of creating a, similar to the Drumbeat Program, but more hands-on and sculpture-related, working with clay and having both students and parents sort of do a series of workshops on creating objects with clay. So I'm curious to see how that flushes out. But she's got lots of creative ideas. But something a little bit different for parents, and not just coming and listening to a lot of talk, but actually being able to do something, you know, project-based and work with their students. Because at the secondary level, we know that getting those parents engaged is a little bit more challenging. So maybe having something that they're actively building and doing will help with that. And as part of that, so that we recognize the extra time that this takes, we did build in stipends for teachers and supplies for those workshops. And an additional position of a parent involvement paraprofessional to help lead the efforts in connecting with the parents.
Kind of wrapping this up, or I guess you could kind of encapsulate what we're trying to do with the end goal with this. I would liken it to the work that Dr. Uteck and Miss Bird's doing with creating a community school, or Crystal Lake Elementary. We'll have the ability within about a year and a half to do that. Maybe at what would look like a high school level. It gives you those resources. The other thing that, you know, the end goal is that you're able to create what we call a demonstration school or a school rigor, where you have the ability to provide professional development onsite from a research institution like the University of South Florida. So these cohorts for the master's program will be onsite. The professors are actually coming there. It'll be geared toward what class do you need tomorrow to be successful in your class? So it's going to be a very tailored master's program toward the needs of the struggling students that may be encountered day to day at a turnaround school. I think that that's one of the biggest advantages that we're able to look at with this. The University of South Florida is a great partner. As you know, we already do a leadership graduate program with them. They're on board with this. But then you bring in a company like LSI that works with Marzano's Teaching Framework, they're actually going to be working hand to hand in hand with this. We're not going to have two different things going on. So the PD that we provide during the day would also be reflective of what we're doing in the afternoons with the master's program. I just think that along with the recruitment and retention, I think that you're going to see a complete change in the teaching staff for us being able to really sharpen skill sets. I think teachers will get excited about it. I know that based on what we've seen, the reaction thus far, they're really excited about it. And then also putting those wraparound services for high school students that we've talked about in those last two categories. The Chicago model, these five essentials, is a research-based model that the Department of Education has really put a lot of thought into. So I'm excited about this for Kathleen High School. And I know that Mr. Jackson and Mr. Joe are both excited about it. So it's going to really make a difference for that school.
Any questions?
I was just going to follow up with Dr. Aix too, and I apologize. But also just, you know, a lot of these grants oftentimes can come down from the district down. This, Dr. Long has done an amazing job working specifically with the leadership out at that school so that every single one of these bullets that's on this page have been discussed, have been thought through, and have been worked very closely with from the school administration so that they have a very clear understanding of what it is that they want to. So it's been a great collaboration.
Ms. Phillips, then Ms. Sellers, and Mr. Hamilton.
Well, I just wanted to say that Kathleen High School really needs this. The morale is really struggling right now. And the uncertainty definitely adds to that. So thank God that we're able to get this book Kathleen. Now, I think I understand you, Dr. Aix, where you said that the wraparound components would be similar to the community schools.
It will be real, and if you're going to liken it to something or compare it, I know with the community schools, they go a little bit further with healthcare and then with some dental services. But the social and the most, the social aspect will be there because we're able to hire an onsite social worker, one for that school, a school psychologist onsite for that school. That's the difference there. We're able to leverage those funds. Yes, ma'am.
And then the other question I have is, as a part of the grant, have you guys already gotten business partners, people that's going to come in and just be support outside of the school?
Yes, ma'am. What we were thinking is, we did some work out there yesterday with the staff, give a great overview for the school board. Then the next step, the next step would actually be to broaden that reach to the rest of the greater Kathleen community some.
Well, I think United Way would be a good place.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. And then I think I know the answer to this question, but I like said anyway, I would assume that you're going to be on to the grant, you and Dr. Aix together?
It does seem that way.
Yes, ma'am, it seems that way.
And the requirements, are those requirements very, um, time-consuming? I mean, the reporting, is it quarterly? Is it, have you all gathered at that point yet?
Oh, that's an excellent question. I'm glad you brought that up. There are deliverables and there is, I included here some dates because this is unusual. We actually have return on investment reports that as a district we will need to do. And so the one for, the first one will be May 15th for us. And we don't have very much guidance just yet on what they're expecting for that return on investment. It's new to them and it's new to us. I think they're making this up as we go along. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, what we will do for that. But I did already start communications with DOE about it because, you know, it's a very real deadline for me, right? May 15th is just really right around the corner. And I want them to, I want to give them every opportunity to be fair in how they do this, right? And so the earlier I start that communication with them, I think I give them more opportunity to be fair. And so since the grant, we really just got our award letter, right? We just found out that we have the funds and we're going to be required to show a return on investment by May 15th. You know, that's kind of tight. So I'm sure I'm not the only one giving them feedback on it. But Melissa Ramsey is the person up at DOE that is managing this at the state level. And so I'm in, she's my new BFF. I'm in constant communication with her right now for this because I do want it to be done in a fair way. So very good point. We also have deliverables, which thankfully they allowed us to set as part of the application process. And so I took advantage of that. And so we really don't have a deliverable for quite some time. So we're good with the deliverable.
When do we get the first pile of money?
It should be already here, if not on its way because we've got the award letter. We already have access to the funds.
And another question is, can you provide food or is food excluded from the grant?
The only food that any project is allowed to provide for is for parent and family engagement events. So if parents are involved, then we've been allowed to purchase food. I would hope that they have the same thought with this project, especially since parent and family engagement is a key element. But that's the only area where we've ever been allowed to purchase food for things. But if I may piggyback on one of your comments, I do want to give kudos to the school because this is a little overwhelming, right? It's a lot of money to spend, you know? There are worse problems to have, but it is a lot of money to spend in a short period of time. And it could be received, you know, like, oh my gosh, what a burden or, you know, like a challenge. But they have not. Every time I go out there, it's like I was telling folks I was meeting with earlier this morning, every time I go out there, it's like a shot in the arm. So, you know, if I'm feeling down, I just need to go out to Kathleen Senior because they got the right attitude.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, and everything here is excellent. All of this is needed. But I was wondering, are there going to be any intensive mentoring and tutoring sessions for those very struggling students that come in, especially in math?
That's already written into the UNISIC, into our current Title I plan.
Okay, so they already have that?
They're working on it. And I actually had a session this weekend at the school for our students that need to pass the FSA tenth grade to get a concordant score. Like Dr. Long has said, that school is very student-centered and is really making a difference on the pieces that they're working with. And so what we're trying to do, and this is kind of those two ideas together, this could be very overwhelming to a school that's already struggling. Our responsibility is to ensure that it's not. So we do everything we can to say, tell us what you want, we'll figure that piece out. And we monitor it. The monitoring will be done here, it won't be done there. But yes, ma'am, the needs of the current students are being taken into account. And that's actually after school and Saturday school. Coach Joe's already working and Mr. Jackson too.
Mentoring is also a tremendous need and we're exploring that as one of the options to add on to this.
Thank you. Ms. Tannen.
I think there is some political context that this cannot be separated from. I think it's important to look at it. Yeah, and this is more for the board than for you guys. But I think this is, when I sit here and look at this humanity team, that, which is what I'd like to give every single school we have, this is the first productive thing I've seen out of the state in a very, 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 very long, long, long time. I have no doubt this is a response to us pressuring them, pressuring specific legislators, pressuring DOE. I think this shows that pressure works. This is not retaliation, this is the opposite of retaliation. They should be doing this for every school and they should fund it in perpetuity. I think it's going to be up to us as a board to make sure these positions don't go away. We're going to have to politic, I don't know that we can come up with the money internally on our own. We're going to have to keep the pressure up not to take these positions away. Whatever happens with the grade, whether it's a C or a D or whatever, the same needs that are met by these human capacities are going to need to be met. Now, it looks like there's going to be some mental health funding, right? Coming down after the, maybe we could flow that into this. But, and I guess the question I have to ask you, if we win the suit, do we lose the grant?
I have no idea.
Okay.
This grant?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Wouldn't think the two things are related, but.
Well, I mean, but it's part of, I mean, if 769 goes down, everything goes down, right? I mean, that's the, it's Schools of Hope is part of, this is all part of it, right?
The funds are appropriated.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
The funds are appropriated.
Okay, well, good, good, good. I mean, I was just curious. And lastly, a suggestion, this is something that I think Lake Wales High actually did really, really well. They had a team like this that they have used to great success. This is one thing where I think we would do very, very well to reach out to Donna and ask how they organized their team. I think that's one of the real successes they had there. Just a suggestion to Donna Hudson at Lake Wales High. They have, they put together, they got some funding out there to put together a team that looks kind of like this. And they had great success in reducing fights and changing the climate. I mean, I would recommend reaching out to them to ask about that.
Ms. Tannen.
Just a question. I can stop coughing long enough. When House Bill 769 came to pass, one of the things with the Schools of Hope for the 2025 that they were going to give out was that there had to be matching funds. Are we being asked to do any type of matching funds or any amount of funds for us to be able to sink in as well?
No, ma'am.
No, it's a completely one-way street. They're giving us the money.
$4,434,000.
End of story. Okay.
Except we have to implement it.
Yes, that's fine, I get that. But at one time, that was written in the proposal. So I was wondering if we were required, okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Wilson?
Once this program is successful, and it will be, I think we should leverage this to go back to the state and says, here's what works. You want to know what works, this is what works. And.
Yeah, the other thing that, long-term, you know, I'm going to give you another example. I really, and I was very disappointed after the first round and expressed it to the department about it because I thought we had really some schools, like, particularly a school like McGolfin or Kathleen. This is a life-changing opportunity for schools like that. And I think trying to figure out how to leverage these opportunities because teachers want to continue to grow. Teachers want to hone that craft. But we got to figure out a way that it's actually accessible to them at these campuses. Because they still have families, they still have lives. That's what this does. They're investing in their livelihood and we're investing in them and the wraparound services. I think that's one of the things we'll have to continue to look at. So I completely agree with you, ma'am.
And in talking with the folks from USF, also thinking about, this is unprecedented. This is, you know, a very unique opportunity to have so many staff from one single school be part of a cohort. Because we can have up to almost 40 staff be part of this cohort and have graduate degrees or certificates as a result of this. So studying this and looking at how, you know, what was the impact of having this larger cohort in just one school? Because this is quite unique. It's a very unique opportunity. So it'll be interesting to see.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
So, Madam Superintendent, are we ready to go back to the top of the agenda? Is that what you'd like to do now?
We are. Only thing I'll say, can I borrow yours for a second? Before I switch over and hand it off to the chair, each year you receive a school day from the Lakeland Magic. We had schools that attended last week. One of the Magic games, it was more education. It was not just about just going on a field trip. It was education. So we had several schools that they did attend last week, the middle schools in Lakeland. And we're looking to branch that opportunity out through the Magic for the, for next year and have it a little earlier for more of our schools. And as you can see in that booklet you received, it's more of an education focus in the booklet. It's not just a booklet about the players. It's all tied to education. So I wanted to make sure you, I share that with you. And we always also presented a game ball from the Magic, a signed game ball from them.
Is that in your office?
That's in my office. Is that in your office?
Just made it to me.
Going to bring that out here. Office on the left, you need to. And our Winter Haven girls, I'm sorry, I have to take this premise. Our Winter Haven girls and boys, the girls are in the state championship this week and the boys will play tonight, possibly in the state championship next week.
That's right.
From Winter Haven. Awesome suggestion.
Okay, before we, before we move into the board comments, again, if it's okay with the board, I would. We have Dr. Freo here, we have a proposal that he submitted. I'd like for us to. I'd like for us to discuss it and review it and ask any questions. Dr. Freo, would you, would you like to come forward and if we have any questions, we can ask those of? Dr. Freo, before we bring this to the board for a vote. So would you, you like to make any comments about it or any board members have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I, I remember having a conversation about continuing um to utilize Dr. Freo when we had our retreat back in January. Um, I, I was not expecting for us to have a proposal today. I thought we were gonna have a discussion before we would have a proposal brought before us. And, um, so that was a little bit of a concern. I don't have a problem with Dr. Freo doing the work, he does a great job. And I think that before a proposal came to us, we should have had discussion. Secondly, we have the possibility of having four new board members uh in November. And the timeline for the retreat is in September. And I think we need to rethink that, because if we have four new board members, it would just seem to me that they would need to have input on the plan and just be a part of the retreat. I know that we talked about having uh two different periods of conversation during the year. But I, 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 I'm, I'm just wondering, do we need to change that to a different date? I know that the evaluation needs to be done, because Ms. Jackie needs to get evaluated and we would have the data by then. But I don't think we need to have a retreat until we uh know who's gonna be on the school board in uh either August or November. So those are my comments.
Could I respond to that?
Yeah.
Um, I think the reason why it's scheduled this way is because we have been trying over the past two years to get all of these activities chronologically aligned so that they make sense. And it's conditioned to some degree on when we get information back from the State Board of Education and the DOE. It, it is conditioned also by the fact that you have to do the evaluation of the superintendent by a certain time for contract considerations, et cetera. And we had talked about at our last retreat, based upon uh input from the chair and from the superintendent, that you probably needed to have two separate times during the year that we looked at the performance because of the fact we never get all of the information in at one specific point in time. I, I know that, that throughout my career of working with innumerable numbers of, of group and department officials, you always have that issue of you're gonna have new people coming on. And, and I think we acknowledge that, but to some degree, I think it makes sense to have the retreat prior to the new people coming on for two reasons. One reason is, you're gonna be dealing with the results from the goals that were set by this group, not, not the new group that, that is coming in. And it's sort of reaching closure with this group as to what you had said you wanted the superintendent to focus on and to accomplish. And I think the, the second reason why it's important to do it this time is because the superintendent's evaluation should logically be tied into the totality of the results, which we will have by September. And then you can do the superintendent evaluation, which makes more sense, I think, for this group to do, because you've been here with the superintendent for a long time. The new people coming on will only experience the superintendent for a couple of months if we were to put this off to November or later. That's the reason why we scheduled it this way. I think that, that perhaps your concern would be addressed by the fact that if we follow the process that I, I think we're heading towards, there would be another opportunity in March to look at the strategic plan. In which case you would then have the new people on, and if they wanted to make adjustments, et cetera, then those adjustments would be made. And the, the future discussions of the strategic plan would be based upon what that new group gave us.
And if I may make sure that I'm clear, I know that the superintendent's evaluation needs to be done before November, I understand that. But my understanding in the past is that the superintendent would need to give us some type of report, a progress report to let us know exactly how things have materialized based on the objectives, the, based on the goals rather, that we have agreed on. And so that would be a part of the evaluation. Uh, and I understand and I respect, but I still think that we need to wait, because we are not talking about one or two board members. We're talking about possibly four out of seven people being spanking fresh new to the board. And I just think that we need to be respectful of that. Might not happen, but it could happen. And so, we could do the evaluation without any problem, in my opinion. Ms. Jackie's gonna have to give a report on what the staff have been able to accomplish anyway. But I, I do think that we need to, um, until after November.
Mr. Yerkes.
I'll be honest with you, I was quite shocked to see this on the agenda, cause I did not realize that the superintendent had asked for this to be done or however it got on the agenda, cause I thought this was kind of premature. I separate the evaluation of the superintendent and the annual retreat. In my mind, they're two separate unrelated issues. We can finish up the evaluation without having the retreat, that is not necessary. I totally agree with Kay in regards to having the annual re- retreat, whatever you call it, after the November reorganization meeting. I was on the other end of that in two thousand and six. I felt very offended that a major decision about the superintendent was made, knowing that I was coming on board in just a few short weeks. I strongly urge this board not to go down this route of making a major planning session meeting, knowing you have at least two and maybe four brand-new members of this board.
Ms. Cunningham.
I guess I don't see it that strongly. I kind of agree that this is the group that's formulated the goals and objectives that we've been working toward. And I would like to see that the superintendent, that the data is brought forward prior to the change that may occur in November. And that this board review that data and um present our superintendent with her evaluation accordingly. Because those folks are gonna be so new, um, I feel that this board needs to do that. And I, I personally agree with the timeline that's been set.
I would, I would venture to say, as a very new board member, and I'm sorry that Billy's not here to see if he agrees with me, but I think the first two months are kind of a whirlwind, so to do something right after you're elected is not necessarily going to be the most helpful thing. In my mind, when we had this conversation at the strategic planning session in January, I thought we had talked about doing it like February, March, having the strategic planning session, but then also having, almost like we did that first morning part with all of the updates from every department in September, which was, I thought would be very helpful, because as a new board member, evaluating Ms. Jackie last year was a little bit difficult, because some things, I didn't know how she was doing in certain areas, because we hadn't had a presentation like that. Which it's not our responsibility to know the inner workings of every department. I don't think any of you want us knowing some of the inner workings of every department. You know, we, we're here to oversee and set policy and make sure we're moving in the right direction, but we don't necessarily need to be dictating, we shouldn't be dictating how each department's working. So I think it, it's very helpful to have a session like we did the first half of the day, where, you know, this is what we're doing in Ann Everett's department. And I, I mean, I just personally think I learned so much that that would be extremely helpful in Mar- and, sorry, in September, to hear how we've met those goals that we set. And then have the actual strategic planning session in, later in the year, so that we can meet twice a year, if that makes sense.
And I, and I think, if I can comment on that, that's what I had envisioned would happen at the retreat in, in September. It would be that update, and then of course the board always gonna have that opportunity to say, hey, you know, can we make an adjustment here? Can we make an adjustment there, et cetera? And it would also include the superintendent evaluation, since that needs to be done at the time of that.
I, I, my first reaction was, September wasn't, but the more I thought about it, cause I did, I tried to, the new board members, they come on in November, but there's Thanksgiving and Christmas. So it would almost be January, February, and if we're gonna meet twice a year, if the board is gonna meet twice a year and do it in March and September, um, you just have to know that every other year, you're gonna have some new board members. They can be present if they, some of them may be known, my race probably won't, as there's four people in it. But they, they can have an opportunity to come in person in preparation for the, March will be, March will be there before they know it, being elected in November. Once again, because it's at the holidays, you really don't start learning until January, February and March. So I think unless you want to not have it twice a year, but I, it's too much just to have it once a year. I think it needs to be divided out. And I don't know any other time in September, as I started looking at, how can you squeeze in? Because you're not gonna be, it's November twentieth or nineteenth or something. Where are you gonna put that in there before Christmas? You're not. So then you're getting backed up to when you're gonna have it in March. So I really don't, at, cause I really tried to think it out, to see if it was logical to include the new board members. And I don't think it works out, because I like the, the two twice-a-year meetings. It's too much to have it just once a year.
I think maybe my comments are not being understood as well as I would hope. I'm not saying you shouldn't have a meeting. I'm saying you shouldn't have a strategic planning meeting until the new board is established. You would have a meeting to review the evaluation document. That's totally separate than a strategic plan meeting, in my view.
Well, I would like to offer that, um, it, from, from my perspective, and we're not talking about hiring a new superintendent. I could have, I would agree completely if that were the case. What I see is doing is providing definition for our superintendent, providing a roadmap. And I, I would think, Ryan, the superintendent's shoes, I would appreciate that. I would want to know where the board wants me to go. I, I understand, we could have some new board members coming on board and, and certainly they will have some input in, in, from their perspectives, but I, I think in the meantime, there needs to be a roadmap. Uh, that's kind of my sense of it. And, and, uh, you know, as a board member, I, I have difficulty with, with conceptual, the conceptual process. I want to see something in front of me that I can actually review and talk about. So we brought this forward to, to, as a starting point, not as a final document, to start a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, that, having just, just, it's a part of, I'm, I'm gonna infer, but, so, sounds to me like we're doing twi- twice a year. It, it, I, I think it would help, it helps me to think this, before, I, I think a year is the wrong unit of measurement for education. And in, anyway, I think it's an entirely artificial measurement that, that doesn't benefit anybody. I think what's much more important is to have a set of priorities that are ongoing over time that we then prune off at any point, if we want to prune one off or add one over the course. It's, it's just like a regular cycle, and I, I think you can plug anybody into or out of that cycle at any time. So any meeting becomes a strategic planning meeting in the sense that we're not recreating the plan each year. We're, we're, we're taking, we, we, it, I mean, think, think of it as an organizational direction meeting. You know, two organ- organizational, strategic organizational direction meetings a year. I, I think that way you don't run into the problem with new board mem- what board members are not. It's, it's, it's just something that makes sense in terms of what the initiatives are and what the focuses are over time, rather than starting over every, every year and, and, and having it be sort of a, a yearly thing. So I, I think I support what I hear as being said, or am I misinterpreting anything?
And, and if I could just follow up on, on what Mr. Thompson said, I, I think you're right on point, that i- if you look at this as strategic planning and say, okay, when we have the retreat, what we're gonna do is consider, you know, changing everything in terms of direction, et cetera. And, and perhaps it would be service better to talk about update, you know, be, update meetings of some type. And what I envision is you're gonna have two update meetings a year. One of the update meetings would come near the end of the cycle and would be combined with the superintendent evaluation, which would be the one in September. The one in March would be an update meeting, based on that data which is already available, that had not been available in September, so that the board has always kept apprised of where are we with regard to our strategic goals.
And I, I, I think maybe one way to adjust this is if, is it, is a board, board, board member or staff had a request to change a strategic priority, that they submit that prior to, to the meeting and it could be put on for, for discussion or not. And, and, I, 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 I think that's the way that you, so you keep your, your big streams that are always gonna be about the same. I mean, we're always focused on a sense of the same stuff, we, we call it different things. But you, you can take specific things in and out of it organically, and that way, you're not always starting over all the time. It's not, you know, and I think that'd be easier on staff, too. They're not having to always recreate a report, so anyways.
Ms. Reynolds.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, Tim, cause I think we're saying the same thing, just we have different definitions of what strategic planning is. But your, your concern is more so setting strategic, the strategic plan right before the board comes on.
Absolutely.
I think when we talked at our last strategic planning meeting, we intend to keep those five goals the same.
You don't know that well, the majority of the board knew.
Well, it's, right, but talking about it twice a year, I mean, do you think that there's a better time to do?
Finish the evaluation of the superintendent, cut and drive, end of story.
So just have the updates and no conversation?
That's not a vision for the future. That's looking back. Has the evaluation gone as planned, or has the goal gone as planned? And you finish the evaluation. You move forward with a strategic plan, whether it's brand-new, which I don't encourage, or whether it's an update of what you have, that's done with your new members. The evaluation is finished with the current board. Two separate issues.
Just leave the superintendent's team with what's the goal for the next six months until you have that strategic?
Well, you're gonna have another strategic plan meeting in January, I would hope, with a new group.
See, my, if I had any request, it would be not to have it until at least March, for the sake of new board members.
I'm just saying, after they come on board.
Right, but it's.
But not before January, I wouldn't think, cause you just got through saying, it's a whirlwind for the first sixty days or something.
Yeah, if we had had the strategic planning meeting that we did this year in January of twenty seventeen, I may have resigned the next day, just cause it's a lot of information and, when you're still getting.
But I just know from the other side of the seat, knowing that I've been elected in August, I'm coming on in November, November the twentieth, and you have made major strategic focus changes and did not let me be a part of it. You're gonna create potential animosity with those two to four new people. They know they didn't get a chance, cause you did it before they got here. It happened to me, I know, I know how the feeling is. And you will get resentment and pushback, quite human nature to do so, when you could have just postponed the going-forward meeting and separated it from the decision on the evaluation, which is a look back.
Mrs. Fields.
Well, I, I find it interesting that we're having a lot of discussion on this. When we were looking at the master board training, and we were talking about having a master board training before the end of this year. The majority of the board members said that they didn't want to do the master board training, because they wanted to wait until we got new uh board members on. And, um, and so to me, this is, this is similar. And I want to make sure that it's understood what I'm saying, cause I don't think that I clarified it well enough, or maybe I'm not speaking well enough today. I am not saying wait until after, um, uh, January of twenty eighteen to evaluate the superintendent. I am saying evaluate the superintendent as is in this document. She would bring a progress report from her team, saying what has been accomplished and all of the goals that we have. And then we would take that information to do her evaluation. And after we get new board members on, then we would have the retreat, be it whenever, the first part of twenty nineteen. Just want to make sure you all understand that, cause I, I feel like I'm not explaining myself well today. And if I'm not, I apologize for that. But, uh, whatever the majority of the boards, uh, agrees on, it is what it is. But I just need to let you all know that, um, I have concerns that we are considering doing this in September.
Ms. Allen.
I am fine with having a report, that's sort of what I thought this rep- retreat was, to see how we fared with the new information and look at it. I would expect, especially with new board members, that we would not be entertaining major changes at this, but to look at.
But the title says you are.
You need to read the document, because the document, if you didn't, I'm just saying. If you didn't, I'm just saying, the document talks about being able to change your goal, isn't it, B? I mean, you would hope and pray that it would be the same. Nothing would change much. But that's not the way that this is, is, is right now. Doesn't mean that Dr. Freyho can't go back and change it, depending on the consensus of the board. But I'm just saying that's what this says.
I would, I, I knew that, but I would think that the board would be sensitive to the fact that new people were coming on and only if under dire circumstances, if something needed to be tweaked, if the, if the, or if we met a goal, or met a goal.
Yeah. My gosh.
Those things, but I would think that we wouldn't make major changes.
I see exactly what you're getting at and I see the, the terminology. And, and the idea that I had in mind wasn't that the board would say, okay, let's start changing this goal.
Right.
But let me just take a, for instance, let's say that you had, that the graduation rate would be at a certain level. And then you realize, son of a gun, we've passed that level already. Are we going to keep that as the, as the target? Or do we now say, okay, let us shift it? I think we had a discussion similar to that at the, at the last retreat, that hey, we've met the goal already. We need to move the marker, not in terms of, oh, you know, we don't want these goals anymore, let's talk about new goals. That's what I was saying about either reaffirming or one, or, or adjustments as needed, but not a rework, a total reworking of it. I think maybe the proposal was.
Were you happy?
You can go first.
Yeah, I just, I just think we're overthinking this. I, you know, as, as somebody who would love to undo several of the strategic plan goals who, that were set about six months before I got elected, I'm not bitter about that. I don't have any animosity toward any, anybody. It's my job to convince all of you to come along with me. So I, that's, I think if you set, the, what I like about this structure is, you, 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 like, like you say, Tim, the, the plan or the priorities or whatever you want to call it, shouldn't be that radically di- different from time to time. Look, I mean, I'm going to do everything I can to get, get the A grade thing out, out of our, out of our strategic plan eventually. But other than that, I mean, we're, we're really looking at the same basic things. So it's just a way twice a year where we have a, and, and it helps with the new board, board members because you're not having to wait, wait a year. Like I had to wait, I mean, Sarah, Sarah Beth and I had, 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 had to wait more than a year to have a shot at exerting some gravity on the, on, on, on the stuff that had been approved the summer, the summer before. And that stuff's still exerting gravity. We, we were willing to, you know, go along with various things. And, but that's part of it. It's, 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 it's a political, ongoing so- social or, organizational thing. I, I, I think having it twice, twice a year is good. I, I don't, if, if it's September or August or October versus March or January, who, who cares? Split them apart, roughly, roughly six months and, and let's go.
Ms. Reynolds?
My comment was just going to be that thank you for your clarification because that I think was very helpful. But I, it's going, unless someone either dies or resigns or is replaced by the governor, it will always be the same board in September as it is in March. So I would think that any major changes that are being looked at would be done in March. I don't know that anyone is going to, unless something occurs within our district that justifies, okay, this has to be changed immediately. You know, there's clearly a glaring issue here. I can't foresee a circumstance where the board that was in place in March is going to come and totally undo and change all of the goals six months later. It just doesn't make sense to me. But I do, I, I think it's crucial that we have that time to see where we are to meet our goals. But if things happen, like the graduation rate increases to eighty-five percent, okay, we, we don't want to not tell the district what our new goal is until March, when students are graduating in June. I mean, we hope that they're always going to be increasing graduation rate, but I think it's only fair to set the goal at the beginning of the year and not wait until March if we're needing to up the bar for things like that.
Ms. Cunningham?
I would have to agree. I think we need to proceed with what you've outlined. If there's some, some semantics in there that changes the structure of how it's written, so be it. But I think we should meet twice a year. I think that's awesome. I think the group that's in place in March should be the same group that's in place, as you said, unless one of us, whatever, should be there in September. And then when the new board comes on, whoever that may be or however many that may be, then they will have their opportunity come March to sit down, reevaluate the goals or tweak them, however. And then that same group next March does the same thing next September and we have a continuous plan. So I, I feel like we're good. I, I do, I feel comfortable with that.
You have something?
Oh, no.
Just one, and this document doesn't talk about the March. So before we do vote on anything like this, I would like to see that incorporated, just so that that's, doesn't fall away.
I, I won't fight anybody on this, but I, I actually think January is better. Or it's less, less busy. People come back. I mean, I think, I mean, at least, I don't, you got, which, which is more, more busy for that? Yeah, anywhere in March.
March.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I know my life is a terror right now. So, I mean, I, I think.
Early is better.
Yeah, and, and I think if we're doing it twice, the same stuff applies. You know, it's, it's.
And one of the reasons we have picked March is because some of the data that the DOE provides is supposed to come in in December. Sometimes it comes in late. And if you're going to have a need, March meeting, a discussion of those data that are, are new, you need to schedule it in a way that you know that you're going to have the data available. That was the only reason we were talking about it. Late January, would, would it still work in terms of being assured you'd get, have the information for the DOE?
Do you have to put a hard date on it? Just put before?
No, right.
We don't have to put a hard date or a month on.
For March thirty-first or forty-fourth.
So we, you'll add that before, before, add that to the, to the agreement or are we just?
And actually, the, the reason why the March is not mentioned is because the proposal only covered through the September meeting. And if you want me to put in the introduction that, you know, that there will be more than, than one meeting per year, I can do that. But the proposal itself did not cover any subsequent meetings after the September.
So that means that the amount would change? That means that the amount would change as well?
Well, if, if you wanted me to continue and do the additional work, yes. But the, the amount would, won't change for this. But what I'm suggesting is, I think it would be cleaner if I sent you a separate proposal for, for March. Because this one involves the update, it involves the superintendent evaluation, et cetera. And like Princess, a March one would not include the superintendent evaluation. And it would be cleaner to see what happens this time and then formulate a proposal for March.
For next year. All of next year.
Any, any further discussion?
I, just thank you. That's my only reason for asking that is I wouldn't want this to fall by the wayside.
Correct.
If we don't have March written somewhere that we'll be in the meeting. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Freyho.
I do want to make one other clarification because I noticed that all of the board members are wearing glasses. And I want to, this is not, this is not a French. I, I will have a pair of glasses with two bars a week.
I think that the French refer to that as a lorgnette. They were popular in the nineteenth century.
There we go.
And we've all been there and done that, by the way.
You can start a new, a new style.
No, no, what I mean.
I'm not surprised.
Thank you for, for inviting me to be here. The only other comment that I had was, you know, we started out with the people who described themselves as a young professional and then we went to sort of like a more professional. Now, I don't know where you go after me. Maybe you start the cycle all over. I resemble that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dr. Freyho. So at this time, we're going to go back to the top of the agenda and, and open the floor to school board member comments.
Well, I, I have one quick, just, I, I want to thank everybody who kept their heads in a very, very trying and difficult period of time. I know you guys were working, a lot of you twenty, around, around, around the clock, dealing with a lot of intense things. So to, I, I appreciate it and to those people who, who really tried to apply thought and, and good judgment at a time where there wasn't a lot. Thanks.
Mrs. Ellers?
I just wanted to give you a quick report. You know, every Friday, we have a conference call with FSBA, the legislators. But this conference call this Friday was totally consumed with what the governor was going to offer. And what we talked about, he basically did put it, or at least this is his strong recommendation, to have the one resource officer per school with one per thousand in those schools that are larger than a thousand. Mental health services, I believe for all schools, to have mental ser- of, of, a mental health person in the school. And then the, the, both the legislative committee, I think, and even in his talking about the capital outlay, the hardening of the schools, I, I'm not sure I've, where that money is coming from. So that's of a, a little concern. I've read someplace where you had to, that was your first, with the capital outlay money you had, that was supposed to be your first priority. And when we're looking at roofs and air conditioners, that, that might be something and, and I don't know what they're going to do. The only other thing that I heard was that they're having a little bit of budget issues. If you've watched, the House and the Senate are very different. Same pot of money, but very different allocations for different areas. So they said they may even have to extend the session to set, to complete the budget because you have to have it three days or four days before the session's over. You've got to have that time. So there may be a little extension of the session. And especially with having to figure out the, what money's coming from the things that they're offering for school safety. So that was all that we talked, really, that it was over an hour and we never really got to anything else other than the session would be extended for a short period of time for the budget. And that was it.
Ms. Reynolds?
Also on that note, I talked to Sammy yesterday, too, and he mentioned that they were hoping that budget conferences would start this weekend. That he wasn't planning to come home this weekend, but that they still haven't heard when they'll start. So it may also be alluding that it's going to go over. I just wanted to thank Rachel, especially with the PR for, throughout everything that's happened in the past couple of weeks, but also for getting our meetings up on the website. It, I think, is a huge transparency revolution for our schools. And thank you, Jackie, for allowing her to do that and supporting her because it really, we've gotten tremendous feedback. I don't know what anyone else is hearing, but the teachers and especially our school staffs really enjoy being able to see what's going on because we want them in their classrooms. We don't want them taking off to come and listen to us talk. But they've, they really appreciate the ability to, to participate and not just get the notes from either the ledger or what they hear from people who may have been here, people that may have been here, what they've heard from people, you know, ten times removed. So I greatly appreciate you going through all of the extra efforts.
Ms. Cunningham?
Well, I wanted to piggyback a little bit about what Billy said earlier about thanking our staff in dealing with the, lots of different things going on in our schools after the aftermath at Parkland. And similarly with that, I want to thank Rachel and our public relations department also for a couple of different things. One, keeping us abreast because there was a lot of things that I ordinarily wouldn't know about simply because it wasn't in my area. Someone didn't call or notify me, so it was nice to know, as you said, the chatter that you might hear. And that's a great way to put it because everybody has an opinion and everybody gives something, right or wrong. So it was nice to know the, the right answer and what actually is going on versus rumor. Also, in going to my schools and doing my school visits this spring, I am learning from administrators how much they have appreciated getting the synopsis, if you will. The written synopsis that you did, kind of the major points that, I mean, for them to be able to take that according to them and go to staff at staff meetings and say, here's some of the things that the board talked about and here's some of the actions that are being taken and here's what. Wasn't too much. They don't have, they don't all necessarily have time to look at the videos and all that, but at least to have a synopsis of what took place and where we're headed. I got feedback on that that was, that, that's just really, really helpful to me as a leader, as, as one of your leaders in our community to be able to talk to my staff. So because it's right literally from you, the horse's mouth, as to what took place. There's no she thought, he maybe said, they think. No, it's here's what took place and here's where we are. So I've gotten a lot of feedback on that. So I just want to say to you and the folks, thank you for continuing to do that because it is making a difference. Because I didn't ask the question, those comments were offered. So, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
I just want to follow up on the comments that Sarah made in regards to thanking PR department. I had mentioned two superintendents ago that we ought to be out front with publicizing our work sessions. I'm glad that it has finally come to fruition. I have been encouraging people over those last four years to put that out there. And I appreciate the public relations staff and the superintendent for finally getting that posted. What I would like to encourage is for us to send out communication to all of our staff to subscribe to the YouTube channel. We have over twelve thousand employees and we only have four hundred, four hundred and seventy-one people subscribe to the YouTube channel. We have a hundred and forty-three videos, but only four hundred and seventy-one people have subscribed to the Polk County Public Schools YouTube channel. We need to get the word out there that it is available and that it is there and where to go. Not enough people are aware of that. You don't have to have any videos on YouTube to have a YouTube account. Easy to subscribe to.
Okay. Any, any other comments from board members? I, I would like to mention that Superintendent Burden and I talked and one of the things that we see as being something of a challenge is that we, you know, we, we ask presenters to come and we have staff who come to present and we try to schedule them as best we can. But oftentimes, we're not able to hit those marks and, you know, we push the meeting back late and, you know, causes our staff, I'm sure, to be, to lose time that they could be utilizing, working and so forth. So we, we kind of, we'd like to present a thought to the board of maybe switching up the agenda a little bit and putting the superintendent's items first on the agenda, moving the board members' items to the bottom of the agenda. Wanted to run that by the board members and see if anybody has a problem with trying that, see how it works. Are we okay with that?
Sounds crazy.
That's what we normally do anyways, isn't it?
Right, it's kind of doing the board members. Okay, so we'll, 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 we'll switch the agenda up and, and start that at our next, at our next work session. Okay, so.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
We need a break.
Okay.
Please.
Let's take a short break. We have just a couple of items on the agenda that I think we can go over pretty quickly. And then we'll recess for executive session and then come back and if there are any questions about the informational items, we can, we can ask those at that time. And I know Mr. Bridges isn't here. This could make this a little challenging. Maybe not. The District of Lloyd's contracts, I know that Mr. Bridges has done a wonderful job of, of collecting this information and, and organizing it for us. And we just got this this afternoon. So I, I'm thinking that perhaps we'll want some time to look this over before we start a discussion.
Ms. Chair, I, I apologize. I hoped to have that to you last week.
No, that's quite all right.
Events, events transpired.
We, we're, we're no rush. We agreed to keep this on the agenda until such time as we can address. Yes, ma'am.
Having reviewed it very briefly in the office, I don't know how to ask this, but it would be nice if there was a synopsis. I, I, I mean, like even just a table, I, I don't know if there's a way to take all that plethora of information.
I had, I had attempted to put it in a table. It wasn't very pretty. But, so I put it in narrative instead, but I will absolutely put together a table for it.
I mean, you, you know what I'm, I mean, just.
I, I'm sure that with the, with the assistance of my secretary, who is adept in such things, we can arrange.
We can arrange. It would be just quickly, to be able to quickly look down. I know they're not apples to apples, I get that, but at least to say there's, out of the six counties or seven that were listed for the auditor, we, this, this, I mean, I just think there's a way to, or a summary. Because the summary page in the front wasn't really a summary. It just kind of said what you did and where you were going and that it was very different. I would just like a synopsis.
We will arrange a table for it.
Is that, Ms. Carroll, do you agree?
Yes, sure.
I mean, something you think we could do in your position? Okay. I mean, something you think we could do in your position, okay.
Ms. Fields?
I want to find out, also, can you include the latest documentation of the changes that we voted on in relation to your contracts? Because it's not in here. You have the old contract in here.
Yes, ma'am.
Good point. Good point, Ms. Fields.
Okay. Any other, any other requests or thoughts? So we'll, we'll obviously continue to move this to the next agenda, as we've been doing, and we'll continue the discussion at the next work session, unless there are any other questions. All right, so now we'll move to the review of the school board agenda. We have, yes, sir.
That was quick.
We have some special recognitions, and as I understand it, Mrs. Fields will be going down front. Ms. Reynolds will be reading the proclamation for us, and we'll need a motion for that when you, when you finish. Ms. Reynolds?
Are we voting on proclamations? I thought we were just reading them now.
Well, we, as a board, had not come to that conclusion. I thought we were going to continue with our current policy until such time as we formulated a new one. Is that, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? I think so.
I don't understand this for it.
All right, so we have three sets of minutes. Are there any amendments, additions, deletions from the minutes, questions about? Madam Superintendent, we have some new administrators?
Yes, we do.
We have a couple of business service items, C thirteen and C fourteen, any questions about those, or C fifteen?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
I just need to find it. I think it's C fourteen. Hang on, can't get this thing to work. Come back, come on. On C fourteen, on the bid recommendation, I noticed that, let me find it here, on the electrical materials bid file, the very last number four of the list, everybody's local, as in Florida, and then we have one, Howard Technology Solutions in Laurel, is it Mississippi, Missouri? I don't know what M S is. So my question is, why on earth are we reaching out to Mississippi and everybody else's? I'm not saying we have to stay everything in Polk County, we've got a Tampa in there and so forth, but I just thought that was very strange.
That's one of the former board members, former chair.
I'm not in Laurel, Mississippi.
No. You have a response? Okay, thank you. Ms. Corvone, I have a response from Lynn regarding that.
Thank you, just seems odd.
Any, any other questions about item C thirteen through C fifteen? We have a bunch of donations, C sixteen through C fifty-five, and I, I mean, I'm just going to lump all those together, and we'll give you a few minutes if anybody wants to kind of scroll through those, see if there are any questions, comments. I think we're very fortunate to have so many business partners willing to step up to the plate and help out our various schools. Really remarkable. Okay, any questions, comments? Item C fifty-six through C fifty-nine. Under the regular agenda items, C R sixty through R sixty-five.
I have a couple, please.
Yes, sir.
Number sixty-three, property conveyances for the purpose of installing sidewalks. I would like to make sure that we encourage the principals at those schools to encourage student use of those. I'll leave it at that. Number sixty-five, I did not find, is probably in there, but buried somewhere, the renewal for Polk State Lakeland Gateway to College Charter High School, mouthful. I didn't see how long a term they're wanting. It's not obvious. It is obvious on the Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred, seeking a fifteen-year term, and as you all know, I'm adamantly opposed to those. I don't think it's in the best interest of the public for that long of a term. But I couldn't find it on Polk State Lakeland Gateway to College Charter High School. It must be buried somewhere, but it's not on their front page as it was for Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred. So I don't know if it's a five-year or fifteen-year or something like that. I thought I heard them say, or heard staff say, but I looked through the document, I just didn't see it quickly and-
We'll have that corrected far too.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions, comments for board members? Mr. Bridges, I have a question. On the, the conveyances, since there are two separate warranty deeds, can we do that in one, in one vote? Is that all right?
If you are, I would suggest going ahead and doing those in two separate votes.
Okay. And I-
You can do it, but I think, I think to the extent that these are going to be recorded, it'd be a good idea to just cleanly approve each one.
Thank you. And that, that was my mistake. I instructed staff to put that in one, so we'll, we'll separate that. I apologize, Ms. Wellington. Any other comments or questions about items on the agenda? Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, she said it is five years.
Five years. Ms. Ayers, did you get that?
Don't mind, five years. Just object to something long and tying up the public for that long.
So I guess at this time, we're ready to recess for executive session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, board members, Madam Superintendent, Florida law specifically provides for the school board superintendent to meet with counsel in private to discuss matters that are currently in litigation, litigation strategy and settlement negotiations. It requires that that be announced in a public meeting prior to the attorney-client session. That was done at the last work session. What we will do is recess the work session, we'll have our attorney-client session with a court reporter present who will transcribe the entire thing at the end of closed litigation. That becomes a matter of public record. The school board superintendent, myself, Drew Crawford, John Murphy, will be present. I would, I would estimate that this one probably will not exceed thirty minutes. At the end of that time, we need to, we need to reconvene the public meeting before doing any further business at the school board. So with that, if we could clear the room and arrange for the recording and broadcast equipment to be turned off.